Welcome to the thirty-seventh Honolulu Liquor Commission Meeting. Let's go into Public Hearings Agenda Item Number One, Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Two-Six-Three, Mr. Gotah.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission, Neil Gotah, appearing on behalf of Mama's Place LLC. Appearing with me is Chantel Moniz. We have no changes to the investigative report. Applicant has been operating on a temporary license with no problems.
Thank you, Mr. Gotah. Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Gotah or his client?
Okay, motion to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Two-Six-Three.
It's been moved in second to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Two-Six-Three. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Application approved. Thank you, Mr. Gotah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moniz. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Three-Eight-Three from Oahu Imports. Mr. Zook?
Zook, Zook, yeah. Yeah, good evening, this is John Zook, that's J-O-H-N, last name is Zook, is the U-E-C-H, from Oahu Imports and Distribution LLC.
Thank you. Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, one letter in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. Does someone register for this? And there is, just for your information, Madam Chair, there is someone who is registered to testify on this matter.
Is the testifier in room one-one-one?
Yeah, yeah, she is. There she is, okay.
Well, go ahead and take the testifier. Hi, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Aloha, my name is Jeannie Ishikawa. And I'm the Chair of the Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Six.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and swear your name, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you give at today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you for this opportunity to supplement the written testimony that the Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Six supplied. I do wanna acknowledge and thank Mr. Zook for attending our meeting. You know, I've come to this commission several times on behalf of our Neighborhood Board for past liquor applications. The recent one that we did for Mr. Zook for the Oahu IND was a very lengthy discussion. So I wanted to come and present that to you, so you had a full picture of how the meeting went. It was a full meeting, there were about forty participants, you know, at the Neighborhood Board meeting. And many questions were asked to Mr. Zook. And I just wanted to make sure that you noted how close the vote was. It was a four-three-one, four in favor, three opposed, and one abstaining. I also wanted to make sure that Mr. Zook knows that the Neighborhood Board, we support new businesses. We do want new businesses to come. But for those of us who voted in opposition, it was because there was not enough information. So I'm here to say that we do wish Mr. Zook well, we want businesses to come to Wahihua. You know, and we want him to do good. But I'm hoping to get your support from the neighborhood, from the Liquor Commission to, you know, help us watch over this project, or watch over his business as he begins, because he had no business plan. He had no details to provide us to work off of. So it was a very difficult meeting. But it was a good meeting, it was a good dialogue with John, so we appreciated that. And I just wanted to make sure you had a full picture of what happened during that meeting and how back and forth it went. Because we didn't have answers. So we do support him at this time, based on the vote. But we're asking for the Liquor Commission's support in helping him as he begins his new, you know, venture. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ishikawa. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Ishikawa?
I have a question, Ms. Ishikawa. Thank you, first and foremost, thank you for submitting your written information and for testifying. The only question I have is, in connection with the Neighborhood Board's meetings and deliberations, were there any safety issues raised?
Yes, yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Actually, it was, I asked the question on what would be the safety and security issues of the location? Because the location of his office is in an area where there are incidents that happen. You know, so there are homeless encampments that have happened nearby that have been addressed. But returned, you know, they return after so many days, whatnot. There have been break-ins in the area. It's not a bad area, but there have been incidences. So I brought that up, and John said that he would look into that, and that he had established relationships with the neighbors nearby would help him watch over the location. He also said that he would look into a security alarm system.
Okay, and as I understand your testimony, you don't have any specific concerns about how Mr. Zook plans on operating the business? It's more what the area might present in terms of safety?
No, I would say it was everything. The questions came from all angles, meaning it wasn't just safety and security. It was, you know, what kind of businesses it's gonna be? Will it generate jobs for Wahihua or the Whitmore area? Will it draw, you know, a different clientele that will help vitalize or revitalize Wahihua? You know, because I've been here before numerous times on other liquor commission liquor applications. And, you know, those come and go, you know, those businesses have come and gone. So we wanna make sure that we can help John, but we know that you, as a liquor commission, you have more authority to kinda help him or guide him, because we seriously ask, how will the business, you know, operate? Who, and basically, right now, it's a one-man show. So there are no work opportunities at this time, are no business plans. We couldn't, you know, we were asking, well, what kind of items will you be selling? Who will be distributing it? Where will you be distributing it? Will it be restaurants, that maybe new restaurants will come to Wahihua, or just how it is work? But, you know, basically, John, he's still working on details, which we understand. But again, we just felt that representing the community, there are so many questions that went unanswered, that we wanted to make sure that we could work together or work alongside with the Liquor Commission, or with John, to help him have a successful venture.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ishikawa, I appreciate it.
Mr. Zook, along the lines of Ms. Ishikawa's concerns with the little detail that you do have, since that meeting from the Neighborhood Board till now, do you have anything new that you would like to share with the Commission that could possibly shed some light on the concerns and business plans?
Yeah, for sure. As far as the safety goes, so I can just address this, I mean, it is a storefront, so there is a large play glass window there that, I mean, it could be broken into, and it hasn't since my lease started back in July of last year. And on both sides of the building that I'm renting, there is a six-foot-high fence on both sides that's chainlocked, that only the people that live behind there have access to, you know, unlock that lock right there. And I will be putting in security cameras and alarm systems, and possibly some, you know, bars or things like that. But I did get to talk to some of the residents that live around there, and I got their phone numbers, and, you know, introduced myself, and they seemed, you know, very helpful and friendly. So as far as the security goes, I don't think it's gonna be a big problem. I'm not gonna put, I'm not gonna really broadcast any alcohol being, it's gonna be kind of behind-the-scenes kind of an operation, you know, only for, you know, storage and, you know, just the office clerical things like that. So I don't really see that being a big problem, but there is a lot of homeless people around there, right across the street. There's a storage area, but I don't see it being too much of an issue as far as the security goes.
And along the other lines on your business plan, what are you distributing, and what, you know, what is, what is, what are you starting off, and what are you hoping to achieve once?
Well, you know, once I get to go ahead, like, everything is pending, like I said, I've been trying to, you know, for this application since July of last year, once I signed the lease for the establishment. And it's up in the air right now, you know, with COVID and everything, I think there's gonna be, you know, there's a lot of restaurants, there's a lot of hotels. The industry's been, you know, pretty devastated, as you can see when you go into town, I mean, you know, half the places are closed. But I think, you know, once things, there's gonna be a flip side of that, and hopefully, you know, I can take advantage of that, and, you know, just start my foundation from there and make progress. And hopefully, down the road, I will take on, you know, some people in the community, so they can assist me, and they, you know, bring some jobs to the area, hopefully, as well. But right now, as in, she asked me during that time, you know, like, my sales, and I I have no projection with sales right now, you know? So I couldn't answer that question for her, and quantity and things like that. It's a slow process, and, you know, I'm optimistic about it, but I mean, we're gonna play it out, and we're gonna see how it goes.
Mr. Zook, sorry, I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Yes.
Do you have contracts in place with any manufacturers or wholesalers?
Well, right now, I'm in talks with some of the wineries, and I didn't finalize any, anything, because I'm, you know, pending this. But we're in talks, and, you know, no invitations yet. But yes, I'm speaking about three to five different, or wineries right now.
Okay, and do you have any contracts, or in this negotiations with any retail establishments?
I haven't gotten that far. I figured, once I finalize this process, I can finalize the winery process, and then go ahead and establish some clients. I haven't made any purchases yet, so I couldn't really do anything yet, you know what I mean?
Do you, what is your target market?
Well, I'm really looking for, you know, restaurants, small shops, you know, hotels, things like that, you know, up-and-coming restaurants that are gonna be coming back, when they come back, you know, try to focus on that. And just put my name out there, you know? Basically, it's gonna be wine, some wines from, you know, from France, Europe, and some things that aren't offered here right now.
Is your intended market in the Wahihua or North Shore area, or is it the?
Yeah, it's gonna be mainly focused, I liked, I picked really the Wahihua, because it's pretty central, so I can kinda go about, but, I mean, I'll probably be focused on more of in-town, and, you know, in Honolulu, and maybe Pearl City right around there. That's just kind of a mid, you know, place where I can, you know, go from there and talk with clients, and try to, you know, set up some logistics there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, Mr. Zook, I just would, um, I commend the Neighborhood Board for being here and sending, you know, someone here to testify, and being concerned about their neighborhood, which I know it's a far drive to get down to our office, so I really appreciate it, Mrs. Ishikawa. But I would encourage you to continue to have open dialogue with your Neighborhood Board, as well as the surrounding community and the business owners there. She is correct, and she has come before to testify for various businesses, and it is, they have wonderful plans to revitalize Wahihua, so I believe that, you know, through time, it will come back to a wonderful place that it should be. So, um, hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. Um, hearing, nothing else? Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just saying, I love Wahihua as well, and I really think that it is very up-and-coming. And, you know, I'd be very happy to have my establishment there, for sure.
Right, that's good news. Okay, Commissioners, can I get a type of action, please?
Yes, Chair, a motion to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Three-Eight-Three.
Sorry, second.
It's been moved in second to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Three-Eight-Three. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Vote aye with reservations.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye. Motion carried, application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to preliminary hearings, Agenda Item Three, Transfer Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Five-Two-Three from Kama Malu Market LLC, Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Minyoung Woo on behalf of Kama Malu Market LLC. No changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
A motion to approve Transfer Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Five-Two-Three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Five-Two-Three. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application approved. Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Thank you.
Okay, calling Agenda Item Number Four, Transfer Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Six-Five-One from NG, NJN One-One-Two-Six LLC, Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Minyoung Woo on behalf of NJN One-One-Two-Six LLC. Also, together in other line is the applicant, Jongmin Yo. It's also, um, June application.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Commissioners, any questions?
Motion to approve. Go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to tell you that the, there is actually one correction that I wanted to make in the investigative report. In page four, the, as the opinion, the business has been transferred before Commission approval was obtained. So I did send the email to the investigator with the some addendums. That is, the actual business transaction, escrow period is extended, and escrow is.
Ms. Wu, sorry. We'll be discussing that at a later time at another hearing. So can you reserve your comments for at that time?
Yes.
Although it's in the, we noted on the investigative report, we will address it at a different hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. A motion to approve Transfer Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Six-Five-One.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Transfer Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Six-Five-One. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Application's approved, Ms. Wu.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Four-Four-Two from Kohuku Beer Garden LLC. Mr. House.
Aloha, Commissioners, my name is Christian Philip House.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. House. Did you get a, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, and Christina O'Hira here for the applicant.
Oh, okay, okay. Ms. O'Hira, any changes or anything to the investigative report?
No, we don't have any changes.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions or comments for the applicant?
Just clarification, Ms. O'Hira or Mr. House. So I know there's another agenda item coming up for the same applicant. But the space or the lease premises for this application, that's for the retail only?
The retail is within the dispenser, so it's kind of set up like, I forgot the name of that establishment, it's salt, Christian, remind me the name of it.
Village Tasting Room and Bottle Shop. Can you, sorry, am I coming through?
Yes, you are. So the retail, Mr. Commissioner Mia Shirou, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, I'm not familiar with the layout of the village bottle shop in terms of the respective license premises. But I think I understand, so that's sufficient, thank you.
Thanks.
So the location of the applicant is at the old sugar mill, I believe, at Kohuku Sugar Mill, is that correct?
Yes.
And there's a lot of businesses around there, and you're, part of your business plan is you're hoping that they would bring their food over to your establishment and be able to enjoy alcoholic beverages at your establishment, correct?
Sorry, Commissioner, my unrelated, I need to go frozen.
Yeah, I think his internet is a little spotty, but yes, the idea is because that, now it's, you know, the sugar mill is kind of a shopping mall area, and there are a lot of food trucks and just restaurants in general. So he's not, we're not intending to serve food per se, but what our hope is, is that those restaurants who don't necessarily have, you know, a lot of outdoor seating and things like that, their patrons are invited to use our outdoor seating, and hopefully, they will enjoy a cocktail or something like that responsibly.
I think that's, it would be one of the first, it is the first within that area, is my understanding. My only concern is that you get a lot of traffic there, and you have big food truck items there with a lot of traffic there. The only concern that I would have is the amount of visitors and traffic that you will be receiving. Your staffing issue, or your staffing suggestion has, I don't know if it's gonna be adequate enough on the weekends, knowing how busy it is out there on weekends, when waves are up, or people, you know? So just be mindful of that, especially with the shrimp trucks and everything happening out there, that's the big catch out there, so.
It is, yep. I will definitely be mindful of that.
Commissioners, any other? Go ahead, Ms. O'Hira.
Sorry, and I was gonna just say, I think the employment, the employee numbers we provided were, you know, it's tricky, because with COVID, we anticipate a certain, you know, level of patrons, and then as restrictions lift, or people feel more comfortable, then, you know, we fully understand we'll need to, you know, bring up the level of employees as we get busier, well, hopefully, busier, right?
Yes. Yeah, just staff accordingly, especially, and you do know this, Mr. House, being that you own the previous establishment, as well as that, you know, the traffic out there can be overwhelming, and you'll get a bunch of visitors that will just come out of the blue, you know, out of nowhere, so.
Yeah, and they're coming now, they're definitely showing up, so yes, I'm well-prepared to handle that influx of people coming through. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
A motion to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Four-Four-Two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Four-Four-Two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved. Okay, going on to Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Four-Four-Three from Kohuku Beer Garden LLC. Ms. O'Hira, please introduce yourself again for the record.
Hi, Christina O'Hira for the applicant, and with me is Christian House, the owner.
Thank you.
We have no corrections to the report.
Thank you.
I do have some questions for Mr. House and Ms. O'Hira on this one. I didn't have, see the retail portion as big of an issue, but there may be some challenges to this license, you know, with the outdoor areas you propose live music, and also wanted to know if you approached Neighborhood Board yet, and have had any discussions with them for that?
I have not approached Neighborhood Board as of yet. I can and I will to discuss my business plan, and how I'm gonna be, I think, a complement to the area, and not a nuisance. As far as the noise goes, you know, if we do have live music, it'll mainly be background music, conversation level, you know, allowing music, no concerts, no, it'll be like a single musician singer acoustic. And I'll keep it as low as possible, and I'd be very, very aware and open to changes, depending on my neighbors', you know, comments or concerns.
Yeah, one of my concerns is that, hopefully, you do get pretty busy out there. Again, what Chair Ganabon mentioned, you know, the number of people out there, the possibility of, you know, overflow in the area. And just keep that in mind.
I will.
When you do speak to the Neighborhood Board and.
I will. Yeah, I guess I'll be lucky if it is a crowded establishment, and I will definitely keep that, you know, crowd control in mind.
Any other questions? Type of action?
Yes, yes, Chair, motion to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Four-Four-Three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Application Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Four-Four-Three. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved. Thank you, Ms. O'Hira and Mr. House.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, calling Agenda Item Seven, Request Number Two-Zero-Dash-Two-Zero-One-Zero-Nine from HSI Honolulu Joint Venture.
With respect to Agenda Item Number Seven, we have uploaded and updated the board packet to include correspondence from counsel for the applicant withdrawing this request, so if the Commission will just take action on that withdrawal, please?
Thank you, Ms. Harai.
Yes, thank you. Motion to withdraw Agenda Item Seven, Request Number Two-Zero-Dash-Two-One, I mean, Two-Zero-Dash-Two-Zero-One-Zero-Nine.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the withdrawal of Agenda Item Number Seven, Request Number Two-Zero-Dash-Two-Zero-One-O-Nine. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, withdrawal's approved. Moving to Agenda Item Number Eight, Request Number Two-One-Dash-Two-Two-Seven-Five-Three from Tahiti Chef LLC, DBA approved. Mr. Terro?
Terro Tua.
Terro Tua, thank you.
Hi, my name is Troy Terro Tua, it's T-E-R-O-R-O-T-U-A. I am the member manager of Tahiti Chef Root. We have no changes to the investigative report.
So we're, you're requesting to extend another three-hundred-fifty fee?
Yes, we've been doing the temporary while we were trying to put together the package required for the permanent extension, which we sat down with Inspector, with the investigator, and Sato, and made sure that all the numbers were proper and everything. So we wanna just make that temporary area on the private property into a permanent seating area.
Look at the area, is that a parking structure, is that parking, is it being utilized for parking right now, that area?
It is not, it is not, it's fenced off in same, in all the same styles that it was. Beyond that, there are two spaces that you can park for the produce company or for the Leahy Health, which closes at 5:00 P.M.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee, you have any question?
I do have a question, thank you very much, Mr. Terro Tua. I recall we approved the temporary extension due to the COVID. proclamation. How has that been for you with the outdoor seating capacity wise, any complaints?
There's been no complaints. We've, we've actually increased our business because a lot more people want to sit outside due to COVID and they'd rather sit outside than come into the establishment. So we've been able to kind of get our numbers to balance out with the additional outdoor seating to make up for the amount of people that aren't coming inside.
One of the, I recall, businesses in this area during the, you know, public hearing, there were some comments from some of the neighborhood in regards to having outdoor, or loud noise in the air after certain hours. Have there been any complaints from any of the surrounding neighbors?
We've had no complaints through the liquor commission or from any of the establishments around us. We do have mobile speakers that we put outside at conversation levels for background music until ten P M and then those are brought inside. And with everything going until twelve, basically, they just sit until about eleven thirty and then we've kind of closed it off. Once we're able to get more people inside, we'll ask more people to move inside as it gets later, just to try to appease the neighborhood. I know that was a big concern when we first opened seven years ago with the building behind us because of the establishments across the street, Ninth Avenue Rock House and Aloha Lounge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Motion is to approve request number two one dash two two seven five three.
Second.
And moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two seven five three. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I vote aye, motion is carried. Request is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you. Calling agenda item number nine, request number two one dash two two nine six four from Chinatown Coleman L L C DBA approved Social Club. Mister Luke.
Yes, may the record reflect Wayne Luke as counsel. To my right is Jasmine Monco, the owner. We have no changes to my letter. Basically, this request is just to use unused time because of the pandemic to take us up to the, at least on, on or about the public hearing date.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Luke.
And Mr. Ryan, we are requesting additional forty-five days, is that correct?
Yeah, just in case something happens at the public hearing and it's continued.
Okay, thank you. My motion is to approve request number two one dash two two nine six four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two nine six four. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Request is approved, Mister Luke. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number ten, request number two one dash two two nine six five from Camp Incorporated DBA Republic. Mister Jewitt.
Mister Jewitt again, yes. Mister Jewitt, President Camp Inc., Charles Jewitt, J E W I T T.
Thank you. You're back.
I'm back. I don't want to be, I promise.
Okay.
Okay. Mister Jewitt, you're asking for additional ninety days for this license.
Correct. If you'll notice, I originally asked for, I got a buy LLC, since I got open, I paid that J L S. I also asked for two day goes DBA Play Bar, since I got open about two weeks ago, I paid that J L S. As soon as I get open, I will happily pay Camping DBA Republic. I'm hoping ninety days will get there. I have no direction whatsoever from our mayor and nor our governor as to when concert venues will be allowed to open under COVID rules. Right now, it's tier four, T P D.
Any questions? Actually, motion to convene to executive session.
Second.
It moved in second to convene into executive session. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, we are officially in executive session. We are back on the record. I'll recall the event, the agenda item, recalling agenda item number ten, request number two one dash two two nine six five from Camp Inc. DBA.
Yes, thank you, Mister Jewitt, for letting us convene to executive session. My motion will be to approve request number two one dash two two nine six five for agenda item number ten.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the request, to approve request number two one dash two two nine six five. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Request is approved, Mister Jewitt.
I appreciate that, commissioners. Thank you very much. I'm trying to get open, I promise. I would hate to say, but hope to not see you soon, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Calling agenda item number eleven, request number two one dash two two nine six six from Scarlet Honolulu. Mister Luna, are you here? Yes.
Hello, hello, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Joseph Luna for Scarlet Honolulu. Last name is L U N A. And I put in a request for an additional sixty days for our gross liquor sales due to dance and nightlife venues also not being allowed to currently reopen. Just like the previous applicant, if ninety days were a possibility, that would be preferable, but I will, I'll leave that up to your discretion. There is, is chopped to sixty days last time, so I, I went for what we got approval for the last time that we asked for, asked for an extension.
Thank you, Mister Luna.
Aye. Mister Ryan, are we allowed to modify the agenda item if we choose to, or since it's on the agenda, do we have to?
Um. I'm gonna defer to court counsel on this one. I mean, the the agenda item does specify sixty. I know for sure you would be able to reduce the number. I, I'm hesitant to say that they, that you're able to extend it unless court counsel agrees.
And that's completely fine with me. If sixty days is what we need to apply for, then sixty days is completely fine. That's what I came in expecting today anyhow. So if it's any sort of issue, the sixty day extension would be completely fine with me.
Okay, thank you, Mister Luna. We'll, we'll act on, on that. And my motion will be to approve request number two one dash two two nine six six.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two nine six six. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
No, no, no.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Request is approved, Mister Luna, for the sixty days.
Thank you, commissioners. We also hope to be able to reopen sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number twelve, request number two one dash two two nine five four, Mister Luke on behalf of Kamitoku LLC.
Yes, may the record reflect Wayne Luke as their requestor. This is a waiver of the temporary license filing. This is for the Olaguram in the ward where, ward where else.
Thank you, Mister Luke.
My motion is to approve request number two one dash two two nine five four.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the request number two one dash two two nine five four. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Request is approved, Mister Luke.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, can I get a type of action?
Yes, Chair. A motion to approve adoption of decision and order at agenda items number thirteen through nineteen inclusive.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the adoption of decision and order, agenda items thirteen through nineteen inclusively. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. We are now in adjudication hearings. I will call, oh, go ahead, Ms. Gata.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel Pedro Gata.
Thank you, Ms. Gata. We're calling agenda item number twenty, nom nom.
Chair members of the commission, I spoke with the attorney for this licensee on their requesting a continuance until May sixth. I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty to May sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty to May, May sixth, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, Oniawa Market.
Commissioners. I'm Minyoung Wong, behalf of N C Y Corporation, doing business as Oniawa Market. Also the manager Barry Nam, is present through the application.
Oh, I'm sorry. On or about January twenty-nine, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allow consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Jonathan Bielas at the license premises in violation of section two eighty-one dash seventy-eight subsection B one A of the Hawaii Revenge statute.
Ms. Wu, how does your claim wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second. Second.
Is Chair frozen?
We have lost Chair.
Yeah, I think so. Let's give her a minute.
It moved in second to accept the no, to approve the no contest, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
Your end.
I also vote aye.
Oh my god, this is scary.
Sorry.
Ms. Gata, your recommendation, please.
This is the second violation of this type in five years. Recommended fine is two thousand dollars.
And was this a compliance issue?
Um, yes, it was a compliance check.
I'm sorry, was the recommended fine?
Two thousand dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Wu.
Um, we asked the employee who worked at the time, and she actually checked ID, but failed to really read properly. She said she felt really busy. But still, it was not allowed for her to work again, so the, the, the corporation fired the employee and make give you more education to other employees, you're prejudiced with this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gata. Any further comments?
On this individual who did purchase this alcohol, did use a vertical license, so it should have been a little more obvious.
Good. Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Hearing that motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-one.
Second. Second. Chair.
I'm sorry. It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. The fee of two thousand dollars is imposed. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, Palova Family Mart.
I believe Mister.
Anyone appearing?
For this one.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gata, who's appearing?
I thought Wayne Luke was going to appear.
Yes, I'm on.
Oh, there you are.
Yes, for the record.
Go ahead, Mister Luke.
In the record, reflect Wayne Luke as attorney for the licensee. To my right is the wife of the owner. Her name is Chungar, C H U N G A R Lee, L E E. She's the wife and also the manager at the premises. We waive reading of the charges, enter a plea of no contest.
Excuse me, motion to accept the no contest, please?
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
So vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Gata?
This is the second violation of this type within five years. Recommended fine is two thousand dollars.
What were the circumstances of the violation?
This is also a compliance check.
Mister Luke?
Yes, for the record, the clerk who's sold to the minor is no longer with the licensee. And if you note that this event occurred in January of last year, two thousand. Since then, the manager here, they're slammed down and has ensured that the people working with them, understanding the liquor commit, they understand the liquor commission rules and how to check IDs. And, you know, so far for about a year, everything has been all right.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gata, any further comments?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. A motion to prove the recommended fine of two thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-two.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars for agenda item twenty-two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. The fee, the imposed fee of two thousand dollars, the fee of two thousand dollars will be imposed.
Thank you.
You're calling agenda item number twenty-three, Tiana Cafe and Karaoke LLC.
Chair members of the commission, I spoke with, who I believe is the attorney for Tiana Cafe and Karaoke. They're requesting a two week continuance until April fifteenth. I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-three to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item twenty-three to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item twenty-four, Tiana Cafe and Karaoke LLC.
Chair and members of the commission, like with the previous agenda item, I spoke with who I believe is the attorney for Tiana Cafe and they're requesting a two week continuance until April fifteenth. I have no objection.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item twenty-four to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item twenty-four to April fifteenth. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Club Nine Three Nine.
Chair and members of the commission, I spoke with the attorney for Club Nine Three Nine. They're requesting a continuance until June twenty-fourth for this agenda item. I have no objection.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Do we think, is June twenty, given the nature and the, I'm assuming for the rest of the violations, is June, is there an early adjudication date that we can have for this licensee?
So the reason that we're asking to continue until June twenty-fourth is that one of, so they have three on agenda today. The third, I believe, we're asking to set for a contested hearing. And so they want to continue all of these together with the understanding that one of these agenda items will be set for contested hearing.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Ms. Gata, just for point of order, I know. Uh, Ms. Ogata, just, um, for point of order, I know I would prefer to adjudicate over this matter if it's not gonna be contested at a, at a closer date. Um, preferably, I mean, I understand the convenience of it, but also I'm also looking at the amount of violations that we do have. So just keep that in mind. I don't know what the sentiments are with the rest, with my fellow Commissioners, but, um, just keeping that in mind for not just this agenda item, but future agenda items as well.
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, actually, I share that concern, and if, um, two are not gonna be contested and one is gonna be set later, I'd rather we set the contested case sooner than later. So my motion is to continue agenda item twenty-five to the next available hearing date.
Second.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, June twenty-fourth, I think we already have, um, contested case hearings set every week until then. Or scheduled to be set until then.
But when we take up the third matter, Ms. Ogata, we're not gonna hold the contested case. We're gonna take a plea, right?
Um, on the twenty-fourth, you mean?
Or is the third, you said the third agenda item for this licensee is gonna be contested?
Yes.
That'll be number twenty-seven?
Yes.
Have we taken a plea in this matter yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
So what I'm saying is, at the next available hearing day, we could take the plea and we don't necessarily set it for hearing until the then next available hearing day, if that makes sense.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I was under the impression that we would take pleas and proceed with the adj- the, um, the adjudication, contested adjudication hearing on the twenty-fourth.
Uh, Ms. Ogata, let me clarify what, what I'm saying. If it is not contested, I'd like to hear it at an earlier date, at the next available, if it's a not contested, if it's not gonna be not contested. I'd like to hear from this licensee and clear it off the agenda. Um, and, and, I mean, as far as the contested portion of it, of any other future charges, we can go ahead and set it for the June twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Is that okay? Um, Commissioner Miyashiro, Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I said, and I, go ahead. I would second Commissioner Miyashiro's motion for, uh, continuing, continuance of agenda item twenty-five to the next available.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-five to the next available. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Um, calling agenda item number twenty-six, Club Nine Three Nine.
Chair and members of the Commission, as with the previous, um, agenda item, I spoke with counsel for nine three-nine. They're requesting to continue this. Um, the date that they had requested was June twenty-fourth, but I understand the Commissioners' position, I'm sorry, the Commission's position on continuing to the next available date. I have no objection to a continuance.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item twenty-six to the next available hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-six to the next available. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Club Nine Three Nine.
Chair and members of the Commission, I spoke with counsel for this licensee. Um, we're gonna request to continue to June twenty-fourth for a contested hearing.
Thank you. Um, motion? Just for clarification again, for this agenda item, there has not been a plea, correct?
There has not been a plea, but my understanding, um, after speaking with counsel for nine three-nine, is that they intend to enter their plea, and we have agreed that June twenty-fourth, we will all bring witnesses for a contested hearing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, uh, Ms. Ogata. Motion to continue agenda item twenty-seven to June twenty-four, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item twenty-seven to June twenty-fourth. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Moving on to agenda item number thirty-one, the Crawfish and Crab Shack.
Twenty-seven.
Miss.
Twenty-eight?
One, sorry. Did I just skip? Sorry, sorry.
Twenty-eight.
Skip the whole page, I'm sorry. Calling, calling agenda item number twenty-eight, Club Nine Three Nine.
Chair and members of the Commission, um, I spoke with counsel for Club Nine Three Nine. They have not decided if they were going to contest this or not. Um, so I'm going to ask to continue it, um, I guess for the next available dates. Um, I would also just put on the record that I would request that all of the Club Nine Three Nine, um, hearings that are continued to a next available date all be set together.
Um, thank you. Motion to continue agenda item twenty to the next available hearing date.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-eight to the next available hearing date. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, the Crawfish and Crab Shack. Mister Zabakalan in room one-one-one, and I see Mister Sabala here as well.
Hello, Chair, members of the Commission, Emmanuel Ziwakalam here on behalf of Mac Valley LLC, D B A, the Crawfish and Crab Shack. Um, uh, we waive reading of the charges and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion. You hear me?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Ogata, your recommendation, please.
Okay, thank you.
This is the third violation of this type. Recommended fine is seven hundred fifty dollars.
When were the first two?
The first violation was in October of two thousand sixteen. The second was March of two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Mister Zabakalam, do you or your client have any explanation?
Um, yes, this was an unfortunate oversight. Since this time, there have been, uh, multiple trainings held with staff, uh, telling them that they must clock in when they come into work, obviously. Um, additionally, you know, other, other, uh, measures have been implemented where, um, we've touched base with the staff members and said, you know, if you don't clock, like, obviously, it's, if you don't clock in, you don't get paid situation, but it's a more of a constant reminder that we're trying to put out there so that this issue doesn't happen again.
Okay, and I trust you are advising your client to make sure they are in compliance going forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Hearing done. Motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-nine?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-nine. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number thirty, the Crawfish and Crab Shack.
Hello, Chair, members of the Commission, Emmanuel Ziwakalam here on behalf of Mac Valley LLC, D B A, the Crawfish, the Crawfish and Crab Shack. Um, we waive the reading of the charges, enter in a plea of no contest, but would like to represent mitigating circumst- or, I'm sorry, uh, additional comments if possible.
Sure, thank you. Uh, motion to accept the no contest, please, for agenda item thirty.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata?
This is the first violation of this type. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars. Um, but the conduct that they're alleged to have, um, not complied with is paying two thousand dollars in fines, so that, so to the extent that those fines have not been paid, um, we request that the penalty also be the payment of those fines.
Okay, thank you. Mister Zabakalam?
Um, I, I'm gonna have to unfortunately disagree with counsel. Um, I have two documentations from the liquor commission stating that both fines were paid on November, sorry, right here, this is November fourth, um, of the same year, uh, which is approximately two weeks after which the payment due was, the, the due date was done. Um, I can submit these into, uh, to the, I guess. Um, the first one, um, for license R one-one-six-seven was provided. Uh, it says the investigator is Glenn Nishigata, and the receipt number was one-seven-six-three-four. The second, uh, for R one-one-six-seven, the investigator was Scott Perez, and the receipt number is one-seven-six-three-three. Um, so I was hoping that the commission would be able to, uh, reduce the penalty, seeing as this was an issue of just a, a small amount of time. Uh, what happened is it was served and unfortunately didn't get to the individual who could pay it, um, by the due date, but once they were notified that, you know, it was pending, it was taken care of very quickly.
Okay, um, for clarification, Mister Zabakalam? The payments remain on ele- I'm sorry, November four of what year?
Uh, eleven oh four, twenty nineteen.
Nineteen. Okay, now, Ms. Ogata, any, um, comment or information to reconcile the representation?
I have not received anything from couns- um, I don't have anything showing that those were paid, but I also have no reason to dispute whether or not they were paid.
And could we find out from administration if those, um, payments were in fact made and negotiated?
Um, if I could suggest, if the, if the penalty is, uh, X Y Z amount plus the payment of unpaid fines, if you just add the word if any, if there's in fact no outstanding uh, penalties, then those would not be part of the order, um, that would be served on the licensee. Or we could, uh, take a, a recess and we could go look it up.
Yeah, I'd prefer to do the latter, Ms. Hori, just so we have clarification that payment was in fact made, so, if we could go into recess.
Okay. I wonder if this, uh, this Crab Shack, right?
Yeah, counsel, okay.
I wonder if you could show someone downstairs. Who's downstairs?
I don't know.
Yeah, I wonder if, uh, Art, if you're down, if you're downstairs, could you take a look at the?
Hey, Hannah. Hannah.
Yes?
Uh, I can run it right now. I just gotta print it out.
If you could just like tell me, yeah, if, if you could do that.
If it's the twenty nineteen violations, it's not indicating as paid yet.
Is Art bringing that stuff up, you think?
I, I will note that the document that was provided to me was provided by the liquor commission.
Oh, okay.
Earlier today.
I think they're bringing the, that up, so I can look at it.
Let it get off.
All right, thank you.
My, my apologies, I, I should have submitted it earlier.
It's okay, it's all right. It's all right. This is one of the huge disadvantage of the virtual, the virtual environment, is we get kinda like, uh, who, who's downstairs anyway? What are you, what are you waving at the screen?
Can't see that. I don't know. Yeah. Unless you like have a USB drive with a digital document and are able to share.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which one do you think it is?
Is this L C D two zero, zero three one nine? Oh, I've been having. I'm sorry, zero, zero one one nine.
I wonder what Santo's looking at, right? Huh? Hold on. What I need to do is, oh, Glenn, yeah. Oh, we did.
No, he just stepped out. Doug just walked out, yeah.
Yeah, why?
I don't know, he says he's gonna ask someone. Do you wanna take a look at this app? This has two L C Ds that they owe for.
Kinda looks like he paid that one-three-seven, um.
I consider that it, uh, I consider that it was paid two months later. She thinks it's a posting time issue.
Okay.
That's just a.
Yeah. Okay, if we can go back in.
Okay, we're going back on the record, Ms. Hori?
Uh, yes, we were able to confirm that, um, this, uh, the unpaid fine for this matter was in fact paid by, we checked number one-three-seven-eight-six. It looked like an amount of two thousand dollars.
Okay, and for clarification, um, when was payment due and when was payment received?
It is difficult for me to tell, but I, I've been told that it was approximately two months, two months late, two months late.
According to the records that I have, um, payments were due on September eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
I, I believe the documents I presented, I presented, uh, said that they was paid on eleven oh four, um, twenty nineteen, so I, I think that approximately a month and a half.
Yeah, um, yeah, I can, the due date. Yeah, the due date apparently is, uh, I mean, what I'm seeing is, uh, Sep- uh, September eighteenth and payment on November fourth. Does that sound right with everybody?
Yep. Thank you, everyone, for clarifying the discrepancy in terms of when payment was made and the fact of payment. My motion is gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of
Our each chair lost you.
Five hundred dollars for agenda item number.
Do you think she may, made the motion?
I'm sorry. My IT guy is so fired today, so. Look for the ad tomorrow, looking for IT tomorrow. I'm sorry, so let me pick up where I left off, so. I believe there was a motion and there was a, there was a second, correct?
Yes, Chair.
We took a, we took a vote already?
No.
Yes, Chair.
Oh, we have?
No, okay.
No, we haven't.
No, wait, 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 timeout. I don't think we, uh, we did not take the vote.
Okay, so, uh, what was it? Motion for five hundred dollars, yeah, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, um, is approved for agenda item number thirty. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. The fee of the five hundred dollars is imposed for agenda item thirty. Calling agenda item thirty-one, the Crawfish and Crab Shack.
Hello, Chair, uh, members of the Commission, Emmanuel Ziwakalam here on behalf of Mac Valley LLC, D B A, the Crawfish and Crab Shack. Uh, for this item, um, we waive reading of the charges, but we're going to deny and, uh, request for a contested hearing.
Thank you, um, motion to schedule agenda item thirty-one for contested case hearing on the next available hearing date.
Second.
It moved in second to um schedule agenda item number thirty-one for a contested hearing date. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannabon?
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Uh Mister Zebakalam, before you leave, I need to read into the record certain requirements the commission has. Um given that we're gonna schedule this for a contested case hearing, so please bear with me. Uh since your client has denied the charge and wishes to return for a contested hearing, there are few procedures that the commission requires the parties to follow. First, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested case hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, because we are proceeding with remote adjudication hearings, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive by four o'clock PM the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the liquor commission's website shortly. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birthdates, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information. Do you have any questions regarding what I just read into the record, Mister Zebakalam? And and I did not hear you, but the record should reflect, I believe you shook your head, no.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry, no.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Ogata, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Miyashiro. Moving on to agenda item number thirty-two, Lani Kai Brewing.
Chair and members of the commission, I spoke with counsel for Lani Kai Brewing. Um they have not entered at this juncture, however, uh we're going to move to continue this till June seventeen, with the understanding that that will be set for a contested hearing. Um both parties will bring witnesses and evidence to hold a contested hearing that day.
Okay, and they have not plead, pled yet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, uh motion to continue agenda item thirty-two to June seventeen, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item thirty-two to June seventeen for a contested hearing. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannabon?
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number thirty-three, Vegan Hills. Any one agreeing?
Chair and members of the commission, I was unable to get in touch with the licensee. Um but a letter did go out on March eleven, two thousand twenty-one to Natsumi Kitami, who is the authorized agent. Um I'm gonna move to continue this for two weeks to try to see if I can get in contact with her again.
Okay, and I'll just go for the record, this would be the third continuance. I don't have a recollection why we continued the first two. Um before I make a motion, any questions or concerns, Commissioner? Right, hearing then, motion to continue agenda item thirty-three for two weeks.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item thirty-three for two weeks. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannabon?
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Wolfgang Steakhouse.
As the record reflect, Wayne Luke is attorney for the licensee. We waive reading of the charges and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-four?
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty-four. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannabon?
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata?
But this is the first violation of this type, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Can you provide the factual basis for the citation?
Yes, um in this case, I'm sorry. The liquor commission did receive an anonymous complaint um about the capacity of this restaurant. When the, and like, when, I'm sorry, when the liquor investigators appeared, um they were told that the um, I'm sorry, they explained to the licensee or the manager in charge that they were only allowed to operate a fifty percent capacity and that the table should have been distant six feet apart. The, that was not what was observed. Um the restaurant was operating at, um according to them, the majority of tables were occupied, many of which were not adequately spaced apart to ensure social proper distance, I'm sorry, proper social distancing. So it was a capacity and spacing issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mister Luke?
Yeah, that's correct. If since corrected, they've instructed the manager, has instructed employees as to what the 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 laws regarding the mayor's orders are, and we are in com- uh we are now getting, we are now in compliance.
Excuse me, thank you.
For the record, uh they suffered, uh you know, and it's their own problem that if you note the date of the violation, it was December twenty-fourth, and in addition to whatever fine is recommended, uh we had to close down for twenty-four hours, which was Christmas Day, so, you know, they learned the hard way.
Okay, thank you, Mister Luke. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-four?
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-four. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannabon?
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thir- thank you, Mister Luke. Calling agenda item number thirty-five, Saigon Passion Three, Mister Kyuji.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Chief Kyuji for the licensee. We reading of both charges, deny both charges. Um have it set for an adjudication hearing, and Ms. Ogata and I have a date in mind.
We are gonna request that this be continued to June tenth for an adjudication hearing, a contested adjudication hearing.
And just so the commission knows, I told my client, and the reason for that date is the witness is um on the mainland, we don't know when he's gonna return, but I also told my client, if he doesn't return by the tenth, then we're gonna end up entering a plea, 'cause I don't wanna drag this out any longer either, so. That's what the circumstances.
Okay, motion to continue agenda item thirty-five for contested hearing on both charges one and two for June ten, twenty-twenty-one.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number thirty-five for charges one and two to June tenth for a contested hearing. All those in favor?
Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro?
Aye.
Gannabon?
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mister Kyuji.
Uh before you leave, Mister Kyuji, I I am supposed to read the SPIO. I saw that you were on the hearing when I read the SPIO to a prior agenda item in terms of disclosure of exhibits and witnesses. Do you want me to go through that again?
No, and Ms. Ogata and I have have already um agreed to the exhibits, already done the witness disclosure. Um so yeah, you you don't have to read that again, but um I'm trying to do what all of my clients has tried to arrange that in advance, so we don't have any issues, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, Ms. Ogata, in terms of the prosecutor's options in this regard?
No, Miss, as Mister Kyuji said, we've already agreed on our witnesses and our exhibits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calling let's send the roller, I'm running out of time before my internet acts up again, so uh calling agenda item number thirty-six, Liquor Administrator.
Um yeah, nothing uh to report uh at this time. Uh House Bill one-thirty-six has been scheduled for hearing uh on Tuesday before the joint judiciary and WAM committees. We're trying to determine the status of the, of the House Bill one-thirty-seven at this time. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Harai. Um agenda item number thirty-seven, any admin matters, Mister Pocaro?
Um nothing from me.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Uh thank you. Happy Easter, everybody. Thank you for being patient with my internet concerns. I will remedy that by next week and be broadcasting from my roof with tinfoil. I'll be better positioned next year, me. Thank you.
Yeah, have a good weekend, folks.
Meeting at your room.
Talk to you. Okay, bye.
Bye.
Bye.